Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have Francine, who will meet a little bit more later.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, would you like this little closer? You could absolutely if you want to. Keep it a little warmer in here for our... Martha's like, absolutely yes. Sorry about that.
Could we get a mic a little bit?
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Well, you know, it's new digs. It's a little smaller in here, but nice and cozy and the tech works. So, you know, at least we've got that. Microphones are going to pick up everything really well, but make sure when you're speaking, if you do a public comment later, speak good and clear. We'll have you up to that podium and it should be easy to hear there, too. It's a good conference for microphones, so we should be good there. Otherwise, let's get this second meeting in the month of November for the Village Board Trustees of the Village Ball Spa underway. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the November 12, 2024 meeting be approved?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
I have a few comments on these minutes.
Good luck there, Ben. Good luck.
All right. So, just a couple of things I'd like to mention. There's no mention of my comments that statements read at village meetings should be attached to the minutes of that meeting for village policy. So, that was something we took some time to look at. And it would have been nice if it was included, my reason for not voting for those minutes, which include a lack of reference in those minutes regarding the cutting off on my comments at the end of the previous meeting in violation of rules procedure. So often when someone votes one way or the other, there's some reason attached, and I know it doesn't have to be. I also object to the footnote that was included in these minutes. It was included in the last agenda and is also appearing in these minutes with the suggestion that trustee Baskin be responsible for all planning board and zoning board recordings. It was not actually discussed during the meeting and shouldn't appear in these minutes, I don't believe. Also missing is any indication that I said I would work on planning for remote streaming if there was a commitment from the board to that goal. The board indicated a general commitment to that goal if it can be done. Finally, the minutes misstate the conversation regarding harassment and discrimination policy discussion. Policy includes the naming of three compliance officers. They have been appointed and they constitute the harassment committee. The minutes say, "We do not have a committee for harassment and discrimination, but if we need one," he, meaning the mayor, will make those appointments. That's not exact... that's not accurate. And just so people know, because it's important, the appointments have been made and they are Anna Stanko, Bernadette, trustee Bernadette Van Dence Perez, and clerk Terry O'Connor.
But just to correct, that is the sexual harassment committee. That is not a general harassment committee for the village, just to be clear.
Yeah. Well, there's one policy, harassment and discrimination policy.
Right, what we talked about last time, that is the sexual harassment policy specifically. It's referenced as such in the organizational meeting. I'm just trying to be...
No, no, I guess, no, I'm just trying, all right, so I'm trying to understand what you're saying. There's one policy that I know of that covers harassment and discrimination. Now, you're saying, is there another policy that's sexual harassment policy?
After your raises, we were trying to ascertain the right way to handle it. Also, we have the handbook coming out, so we're going to get a better, I think, grouping of policies overall. So, at this point, we're kind of just waiting out to get our first draft of that, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, is what they had suggested. So, in the meantime, just be aware, and this is probably why it didn't appear that way, that we do the sexual harassment committee in January and that's the name of it. That's what I was handed down. I'm following the organizational meeting from every other year, basically doing that. When I'm handling the agenda, basically, it's there as that. It is not termed as a general harassment committee.
Well, in the policy, and I guess maybe one or both of us are short handing it, but in the policy, it says annually, "The mayor appoints two members of the Board of Trustees and one non-board member as compliance officers to the Sexual Harassment and Discrimination Prevention Committee."
And that's in the harassment and discrimination policy?
So, that's what I'm referring to. And I don't know if there's... you're not referring to some other policy?
We viewed it as sexual harassment issues only in that situation. If more than one person has to recuse themselves, then obviously there's nothing that can be done with that committee either. So, let's say if somebody on this board were brought before, then obviously it's an accusal scenario, probably, and that we have to handle it some other way.
All right. But the important point that's not, thank you, that's not reflected in the minutes is that there are compliance officers that have been appointed and they exist and they exist for, to serve a purpose, so that people know who they can go to if they have an issue. So, it's important that people know that compliance officers have been appointed and who they are.
Bernadette, do you accept that? Actually, one other thing, Ben, you might want to turn more this way, like, because camera's right there, so if you want to see the back, you're ahead of me, not kind of...
Yeah, come on.
Sorry about that. Get cozy with Sean.
All right.
Does Bernadette accept these as the motion maker, or you've got more?
Yeah, just one, the last thing also connected to this is that, the other point I made is that according to the policy, the policy needs to be distributed annually, and that's not reflected in the minutes either. But, and as my understanding, it hasn't been distributed in the last couple of years. I asked if that was accurate or not, but I don't know if anyone knows or is familiar with the policy being distributed in the last couple of years. Regardless, if it hasn't been, it should be as soon as possible again, so people understand and are aware of this policy and know how it works. But that is important, I think, to be in the minutes, that people should, that the policy needs to be distributed annually.
I don't accept them. It's a good thing that we have recordings in Zoom and people can catch up on YouTube with our meetings. These are meant to be a summary. As far as appointments, they're on our organizational meeting minutes, so I think it's covered.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah. I just wanted to add one quick thing. I know I can't talk about the minutes, said, "New York State..."
I'm just, I'm revoking the vote call, so that he...
Just so Terry can hear it.
Go ahead.
Just a footnote, that New York State no longer actually does a separate sexual harassment. It's all in harassment and workplace violence.
I think our handbook folk are going to probably give some better guidance overall about where we need to go with it ultimately, so we'll have a good chance to look at that at some point in the near future. Okay, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I oppose.
Abstaining, okay. Sean Raymond will show as abstaining. Ben was a no, the rest were yeses.
I should probably just recuse, because I wasn't here.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
We abstain. You recuse, you have to literally not be part of the conversation.
Okay. You'd have to step away from the table.
The lawyer said, three to two, whatever it is, means the minutes are approved. And now, let's get to a much more happier topic here. Francine, is it Doug's time?
Doug's good, yes.
Francine, who let us in Pledge of Allegiance, thank you for that. Is going to speak with us at the podium about the Boston area seniors and the great things that they are doing. Turn the camera on to her, so that we can see her, and...
Good evening. I'm the president of the Boston area senior citizens. We are a group of over 400 members, probably between 80 and 100 every week at our meetings. I wish to thank you for your donation to us, which does a lot to subsidize all our activities. We have a pool room, chorus, exercise, crafts, moshing. We have quilters. We have special activities. And the second Saturday of every month, we have either a dance, maybe a murder mystery event. We just finished our annual bazaar, which was very successful. And we have a garage sale and we have two open Saturdays, so I'm looking to anyone that has any ideas, let me know. We schedule eight trips a year. We have our first trip in March to Nellie's in East Durham. It's an Irish show and everybody enjoys that. Another trip that we have, like, is going to the Valley Cats. That's very good for seniors, because you can have a picnic area, they'll give you a picnic lunch. We're looking at the Utica Zoo and the New York State Fair, but that depends on, you know, how everyone can walk around. I know the fair has a trolley. I'm pretty sure they'll assign us a trolley. So, we have a very active schedule and we have seven dances a year, which everybody enjoys. And we are looking forward, looking forward to completing another active year. We have members that have been there over 28 years and we are tearing down our budget as everyone is looking at their finances this year. And everything you've done for us, we appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Francine? Anybody on the board? Francine, Linda and I used to have a policy that I would vote yes if she would save me a dance at one of the dances.
Absolutely. Linda was our president. She had a health emergency and I wound up in the deep end of the pool. So, glad to, I'm glad to see everyone.
Maybe you said this, but can you remind us, how old you got to be and how much does it cost a year?
55, and it's $15 a year. I happen to have turned 80, so I only have to pay $10. And over 90 is free, right? Yeah.
Are you going to ID you, ma'am, because I don't think you're 80.
And we do end members over 90, one or two over 100.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's, we voted to have only two meetings a month? No. No, no, no. The members like to come every week and socialize, so that's what it's there for and we enjoy it.
Great.
That's value going. I'll be honest with you, for the folks out there, it's a great value for that small annual fee and everything you get, basically. So, I promote it to anybody that reaches the proper age out there, join the Boston area seniors.
Join in. After COVID, I volunteered to do a potluck lunch once a month, because you have to be very careful with food, you have to wear gloves to serve it, and it's a tremendous lunch. People bring in crock pots of food. They just love to socialize and we eat a lot. You can have 27 items on the table as you go down through, and if you don't wish to cook, you pay $3 for the lunch. And one nice thing is, on Potluck Lunch Day, some seniors bring their own food and share... We have Potluck and we have congregant meals in the same room. So, that, you know, with everyone, congregant meals, potluck, the other, it's really a social sharing that we need more of today.
Absolutely. Francine, thank you for all you're doing and let us know if there's anything else we can do for you.
Oh, I will.
I just have a quick question. Your service area includes...
Entire Saratoga County.
Oh, wow.
Entire Saratoga.
Because there's also a senior center in Saratoga Springs.
Correct.
I know. Do you know how many of your members are village residents?
I don't have that number. I don't have, I could get it to you if you wanted.
I'm just interested.
Yeah, yeah. We, you know, we have numbers on the village, the towns, what have you.
We're just grateful that you guys get together. I mean, as we know, seniors are very susceptible to loneliness, and so I think it's wonderful that you guys get together so regularly.
We also, have you ever heard of Captain?
Yeah.
It's, they come in and Tara is the one that gives the presentation. They will actually go in your home and visit your senior. And so, you know, not only do we do things, but we invite other agencies in and kind of network.
That's great.
And we do, we do fund Captain as well.
Do you, that is, that's a remarkable organization.
They do chores, they help with, right? House chores.
Yeah, yeah. And Tara's a real stepfire boy. If you have a need, she'll find a way to do it.
That's awesome. And I know they're always looking for volunteers.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very briefly, I will come back to our full view here, because we're going to go right back to the podium, I believe, with public comment on agenda items only. That's three minutes per speaker. If you are on Zoom, this would be the time to raise your hand if you want to talk about an agenda item only. Anybody in the crowd? Liz?
Liz Formos, 89, hi.
Good luck, Liz. Just make sure that everybody can hear you, okay?
Should I move this?
It won't reach, but pick it up.
It's good. I just want to make sure she's hearing the tone.
I just have a comment on G, the motion about the UPWP application, that you're upping it to, from about, what was it, 13,000?
12,300.
To 12, yeah, that's right. 12,300 to 75,000, but there's no indication of what you plan on doing with all that extra money.
Well, we'll explain more later. Definitely a discussion for you. There's some raises for, and I did go through with the board on email yesterday, so because these questions came up, so we'll get to that a few for you.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. Anybody else? Yes, Mike?
Thank you. Good evening. Mike, I put G3 on board. One request with respect to the minutes of the November 12 meeting. In the summary of public comment, I'm, it explains that I said, "I felt there were opportunities for much faster projects," with respect to this particular grant that Liz just mentioned. What I was trying to say was, "I felt there was opportunity for more expansive projects." And to me, there's just a pretty significant difference between those two phrases, so if possible, I requested the minutes be amended for that. And on motion 7H, just a couple of questions. I'm a big fan of health reimbursement accounts for eligible participants, they're a great deal. How will funding for the HRA be determined? And how many?
Full deductible on the new Teamsters plan that was approved for all active members in the village via the MOU with the DPW. So, it's the full deductible, it's a reasonable deductible for both individual and family. So, that deductible goes onto the card for whichever plan it is, and they'll be able to spend it based on the guidelines for the plan.
So, I'm guessing then, if it is part of the union contract, there will be a fairly good number of participants?
Less than the 25. So, it was $4 per month per member, or $99. We assume it's $99 we'll be facing.
And I guess, just to make sure, I stay clear, I believe in addition to that $99 a month minimum, there will be at least two annually recurring fees of $300 and $325, with respect to...
One, I think, only one of those fees. The, I think the, what is it, if the bias or discrimination one, I think is the annual one, and then every five years, I think, is the other one that you're looking at. Five to 10 years is what we were talking about.
So, I always thought a form 5500 was required to be filed annually?
No, according to them, that's a no on that. I think we can at least be five, if not 10 years, is what they indicated. Okay? No problem. Anybody else? Nobody here? Nobody on Zoom? Let's move here. Again, Ben, I don't want you to turn too much, so I'll, you'll already see your face on it.
We have a recording camera.
And I got to turn camera. See this? We got good production, this has been Sarah. Here we go. Hello, everybody? Okay, let's go. We moved the one consent agenda item into the main motion, so here we go. Can I get a motion that Ted's Fish Fry be authorized to operate a food truck in the parking lot of their new location on Double Day Avenue while the building undergoes renovations? Critical insurance has been provided and this has been approved by the police chief and building inspector as required.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second you.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that architect's butler Roland in Maze, or Roland in Maze, be paid the amount of $1,619.58 related to Phase 1A, the library construction project?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza. Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion authorizing the use of Eagle Mat Leaf Fire Company Number 1 for a private party on January 11, 2025, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m.?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the installation of temporary poles for relocation of cellular equipment on the John Street Tower land parcel by cellular carriers? The location shall be pre-approved by the Department of Public Works and/or the Water Department, and no work can be performed until proper insurance coverage is provided with the village listed as an additional assured party and an agreement between the village and the carriers be executed, be provided and approved. The mayor shall be authorized to execute agreements related to this motion after review and approval by the village attorney.
The agreement should be executed by all parties, not just provided.
Okay, executed instead of provided and approved.
With that word out, I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the change order number two between the Village Ball Spa and USG Water related to John Street Tower renovation and authorizing the mayor to execute the change order?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin.
I'll second.
Trustee Fandanza, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve an ice rink for the 2025 winter season at the Eastern Avenue recreational field to be operated from January 1, 2025? I'm going to change that to December 1, 2025, or 2024, rather, because it's consistent with the agreement, actually.
Okay, okay.
So, from December 1, 2024 until March 1, 2025, weather permitting. The hours will be Fridays, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sundays, noon to 6:00 p.m. Motion further authorizes the village to submit a certificate of insurance to the Ball Spa Central School District and to allow the use of DPW staff to create and maintain the rink throughout the season and authorizes the mayor to sign the attached agreement between the school district and village.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Baskin, discussion.
Just want to thank Amy and the staff on, who, Amy Jenkins. She reached out and guys, hope for cold enough weather that we can actually get ice on the ground for a while. So, we're thankful to them and look forward to the ice getting season, hopefully.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion amending the approval from the November 12, 2024 meeting related to the UPWP application by extending the grant application to include an additional scope of work related to potential implementation and a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour. Work estimated to be, when combined with the initial study already approved for submission in the application, to be about $75,000 in total.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. To answer Liz's question from earlier, so in discussion, further discussion with Lobella, they actually believe that they do want larger projects, even though it's only 250 minimum-ish, what they give out in terms of money. So, apparently, there's only three or four awards if that's the case. They're looking for 50 to 100,000 dollar projects out there, so our chances are low, you know, relatively. But they stated that we would need to do an implementation project on top of this if we were to do the study and the study comes out positive and then implementation is next. Implementation means, okay, street by street, what signage is required? Is the street conducive to 25 as it sits, or are there additional effects that are needed to make it more conducive to a 25 mile per hour street type situation? And also works with the state to make sure that we're coordinating because of the Route 50 scenario, where they may or may not let us go and lower Route 50 to that speed limit or 67, the auxiliary portion of it we have in the village. So, more or less, they were looking at the next steps, what they would cost, and with the idea that we would be liable for 10% match, 7,500 total now, and the total amount would be $75,000. And this comes from Lobella, insofar as just how they've seen these work before. Lobella will not have their, any of their work associated with this for the simple reason, they want to be equal bidding possibilities in this situation, too. So, we're kind of going to put in this application, just with the analysis of what's needed here, and that's it, without anybody's name attached to it besides the Village Ball Spa.
So, I guess, I'm still a little confused. Why are we appropriating 75,000 if we only need 7,500?
We're not appropriating it. We're just looking for the ability to put in the application with $75,000 of scope of work. We're not going to actually do the work unless we get the grant.
Okay. Can we clarify that in the motion, because it's...
Well, it was last time, and this is just changing the amount and adding the scope of work. Carolyn and I kind of looked at this earlier take, because we took your emails from earlier and just looked at through them. What were your thoughts on that?
Yeah, it seemed like with the emails yesterday, it got a lot more confusing, and as I looked into this, you had a motion that you are saying, "Hey, mayor, we're giving you authority to sign a grant application to obtain a grant of 12,300." Knowing that they won't likely grant, grant the grant of that, they'll grant a higher grant, that you're just increasing the 12,300 to 7,500, 75,000, and you're basically only saying, "Mayor, you can apply for this grant." To accept, you can apply, it doesn't say that we're going to get it, it doesn't say that you're going to accept it, but you can just apply for it. So, this is mainly just to apply for the grant, like you apply for any other grant.
It's due December 6, so that's why we want to put this in.
A grant of 75,000.
75 minus the amount we're...
You're never going to pay 75,000. You're getting a grant for 75,000.
675, I think.
Right. You'll pay 10% of that, like any other grant.
Well, I guess my thoughts on this, if we're going to do that, I would be more, you know, in the future, increasing the scope of work and have them do the study for the stop speed reduction to see if it actually would make a difference. But also, I believe this grant is for complete streets, too. I mean, that would be a very good value if we could have a study locations that would benefit from a complete street study, other than the ones that have already been done in previous...
This is going to give us some, let's forget this, this is going to give us something from every street, basically, in terms of assessment, analysis of how that street acts and sits there. So, this goes a long way, I think, to beginning of that process, if we can get it, and maybe the next time, we either go for another grant for that aspect of it, or we can pay for ourselves, because we've got a flying share of the information at that point, I think that we would need for complete streets purposes. So, go ahead.
All right. So, last time, I thought we were paying the 12,000, we were going to pay 12,300 to Lobella to do a study for this grant.
No, the other way around. We were going to see if we got the grant, and then if it was within procurement policies, not to start with CRTCs with respect to UPWP, then we would hire Lobella, or we'd have to go out and bid if that wasn't in the procurement. Now, we know it is bid all the way because of the size of this, so Lobella's not going to have their name attached to this at all, and they shouldn't.
All right. So, you're not asking for any money?
No.
Right now?
Well, a match of 7,500 at the most, if we are approved, for 75,000.
Is there a way to just make that more clear?
Well, look at what we're going through just slightly.
Carlos' point, though, we're not voting to accept that grant, per se, with literally just the application part of it. So, we're not obligated to, if we think, oh, this isn't actually that great of a deal, we're not obligated to accept it.
Nobody here is going to say, "If we get it, oh, Frankie, you didn't tell us about 7,500," because we've clearly now talked about it 13 different ways, and we still would have to accept the grant, no matter what. If we rewarded it, we're not obligated technically to take it. I know those data, unless we don't, but I mean...
No, no, that's fine. I just, the way it was worded, it wasn't clear if we were somehow going to be paying 75, or how that was structured, but you're saying, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion approving the monthly fee of $99 per month for HRA card services and other out-of-card services for compliance forms performed by Lifetime Benefit Solutions and approving the mayor to execute related paperwork after review and approval by the village attorney?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
So, this motion, the first, the first we've seen this is on the agenda on Friday afternoon, so we haven't had any conversation about this, so I think it does require some conversation for us to understand what this is. I did read the paperwork that was in the attachments. So, yeah, so one question was, how many, what exactly do we get? It's not a flex, is it, it's not a flex spending account?
No.
It's money that we're, this village is putting in, and then it's a tool of money.
Let me explain, Teamsters program, and again, it's only for active service members. Anybody that is going to be a retiree, under 65, will remain on the Anthem Plan we currently have, and anybody that's falling into that category, we are going to provide dental to be equal to what they fell from. Dental is a minor amount on that. Well, I'll get a vote on that separately in a different meeting, just to make sure that the unions are happy with that fact, that we've got that in writing. the unions are happy with that fact that we've got that on, in writing or in meeting. But then, anybody that's over 65 stays on MVP, so the only people affected realistically are current employees.
How many is that, roughly?
Terry, what's the roster from?
For going to Teamsters?
Yes.
About 19.
19, give or take.
I'm sorry, so it's just for Teamsters, or is it everybody?
No, so it is everybody, and so here's why, ultimately. Anthem's number for an individual next year is crossing $1,000 for the first time. I think it's going to be 1,025 or thereabouts, and Terry, you can jump in anytime if I'm wrong in that.
Yeah.
Teamsters is around 700, so the savings is pretty clear right from there. Now, we give back some of that, obviously, in the deductible. The deductible, I believe, for individuals is 2,500 or 2,250?
2,500.
2,500. Even if you max out on deductible, somebody uses, then you still are saving money overall. Their history, they have numbers they've given to us to show, generally, the number's about 50% of the deductible is utilized, so there's a large cost savings ultimately, and it's a large benefit to the recipient, because in this plan, obviously, no deductible because we're covering it, it's on the Empire, you know, list of doctors that use, there are out-of-network benefits in this situation as well. Better eye plan, prescription eyeglasses, et cetera. Dental, that is really good compared to what we currently offer, which nobody takes this up on, because it's really not that great, but you know, if somebody needs dental, still will provide it. Legal, also disability, I believe, is that not correct?
Yes.
Disability as well. It actually is a full complement of stuff that they receive in this plan. It's, I was surprised by it, and so the Teamsters do not have to let us, let others on it, but as part of the whole discussion, we approved this with the MOU, with the BPW. They allow essentially a one-for-one scenario, one union to one non-union. They consider the PBA members, the police members, as union members, even though they're not Teamsters, so that's how we can, you know, combine all that and end up still okay with office staff, et cetera, in this whole situation. So, the long story short is, there's savings, and it's a better plan overall, and we know three years in advance, essentially, what our premium numbers are. They grow by about 4% to 5% a year, which is, when you think about where Anthem is, if they grow 3%, that's still more than this other one growing 4%.
It is 2,250, right, 4%?
2,250, thank you.
I guess, I mean, I heard everything you said, it sounded like you're talking about a whole insurance, health insurance coverage.
It was approved in the MOU, right.
Right. But this is not what you just described.
This is, we have to somehow get them the deductible in a way that we don't just give them the money, we basically have the ability to get the money back if it's unused, so that's where the HRA, like you were saying, that you've seen HRAs and whatnot. The vehicle is, you give everybody, I think they give two debit cards in this situation, and they go out, they've got, let's say it's an individual, the 2,250 on it, and the plan is spelled out, you know, here's what you would pay on copay for this, or that, or the other thing, and essentially, when they're facing the copay, they hand over the debit card, it's subtracted from the 2,250. At the end of the year, if there's anything left over, the village gets to reclaim that. So, that's how it's managed, ultimately. There's costs, obviously, to do this, and that's the $4 per month per person, or $99 a month as a minimum, will be the $99. And then there's a couple other fees that Mike had pointed out, one of which is a regular one each year, the other one is every five-ish years, according to what they say to us. So, more or less, they help us implement this. It's required, more or less, to do this, because how else will we get the money back? How else would somebody have access to the money? And we have a certain level of option about how much we put into that account, the total account each month, if we want to make sure that we're not overfunding it, if it's not being used actively in terms of the big pool of it, so that we don't have to front a whole bunch of money in those situations. They could, we could put nothing in, but then we'd end up with all these transactions coming out of our accounts, and that would be a nightmare for accounting. So, they actually suggest put in X amount each month, so they at least, you've got one amount that you're having to track every year, every month, rather.
Thank you. Do you think the 100 a month matches up with the demand? What is our, what is the demand?
Marshall Sterling offered these services to us with our Anthem plan, and is, I believe, exactly $4 per person per month back then, too, so, and that was not nearly as vibrant a situation, because we didn't have all these things we were offering. So, they are doing probably more work for us for the same price that Marshall and Sterling was going to offer us that service for, so...
But the 100 a month, that's what...
Yeah, absolutely.
They're administering the program, right?
Yes.
That's what this is. This is just to administer the program. This isn't the insurance company. This is the company that administers the program.
They administer this HRA piece of the program, no?
The Teamsters require us to get an HRA separate from them. Now, they recommended this one because they said we had good success throughout our program with this group, but we could have picked one of any, you know, of them out there. They were very responsive, they can get it set up by January 1st, the pricing is right as we said. We asked their questions, Terry and I did last week on the call, and very quick answers, responsive on getting us even the agreement, because normally, they don't even set up the agreement, but we said we got an attorney that wants to review it. They said, no problem, got that to us, too, so that we could see it and get that approved.
What is the deductible that someone has to pay when they go to the doctor?
You're talking for...
Well, that this would apply to, so because they can then take out their card and...
Whatever it is on the rate sheet, I can't tell you off the top I have, but it's, I think, probably like a $20 copay or something like that. They're not sucking out their whole copay on one visit to a doctor or anything like that.
Right, yeah, no, I'm just wondering, like, 100 bucks, $99 per month for 19 people, and if the coat, and if it's covering a $20 deductible for every one of them?
Well, I look at it as protecting 2,250 dollars of the village's money, or up to 5,000, is it, for the family plan?
Yes.
5,000 for the family plan. So, they're protecting our rights to get that money back if it's unused.
I'm just, is this enough money to cover the demand? 90, 100 bucks a month, when there's a $20...
This is what they do, yeah, this is what their pricing is. I don't know what the concern is in that.
Well, if you get five people in one month claiming a deductible, that's, so that's all the money, no?
They're administering it. They're administering it. It's nothing to do with deductibles.
So, they're going to make sure the money's in place, okay, and connect the debit card to the accounts.
All right, they're just administering it, so...
Right. They also review, they also review to make sure that it's a qualified expense, so somebody can't go and say, I'm going to go buy potato chips at the, I almost said winged, my New York City show, at the CVS and qualify for that Stewart's, but whatever, you know, at a drugstore type thing, and just because it was a CVS, doesn't qualify, ultimately. So, they will actually review.
How much are we putting in for this HRA to provide?
The deductible for whatever it is, so 2,250 for the individual, or 5,000 for a family plan?
All right, so we're just going to do that a month?
We're going to run the card, we're, basically, the card will have access to that amount of money, they will track that. We don't have to put all that money in at once. We'll feed some of it in, and we'll see how the usage is going, so that we're not overcommitting village funds, and then anything that we have put in that isn't used, comes back at the end of the year.
All right, well, that's helpful.
Mike, am I doing okay?
Yeah, I guess, if I may ask one question, kind of like I was asking, what if someone incurs a very large expense in January and eats up the whole deductible?
It's the risk we take.
But, so you would be asked to fund that for that person by the administrator?
Correct, they would, they would take that amount out, yeah. But again, that's, that's the limit to the plan, so they hit that deductible number, then the plan itself is now on the hook for everything after that, at that point, period. It's, it's the out-of-pocket, essentially, that you're looking at.
All right, so it's getting, thank you for this conversation, because it was not clear from the motion or the documents, how the motion or the documents related to anything else. So, so you're saying, this is administration of a, of a plan that is not represented in the motion or documents, it's, it's a...
It's approved through the MOU, yeah.
Right, it's a new contract, and this is implementing a piece of that plan.
Administering it, but yes, yeah, that's a good word, thank you for that.
It's not, it's not a new benefit, or something that...
No, it's something we considered doing for the previous plan, obviously, or the current plan we're on, but we didn't see as much need, again, because we didn't have as much requirement with deductible.
Right.
In this situation, we have a lot more now, and so it's well worth the $4 per person per month, up to the $99 minimum.
Yeah, all right, thank you. And in the contract, the paperwork, it says, there's a 450 per document, there's a Form 5,500 Preparation Services, $300, you're saying you don't need that every year, there's a access to nondiscrimination testing website.
That is, apparently, they do a measurement of making sure that we are not being discriminatory in what we're providing in that situation, so it's a requirement in these types of situations. They do that annually for us, and I guess we have access to the website, ultimately.
All right, thank you. Now, I understand that, I appreciate it.
No problem. We had to ask some loose end questions, so I don't think less of you for that at all.
Well, it sort of came out of the blue, this thing.
Well, for all of us, a little bit, because we had thought that the Teamsters were actually the ones that we'd have to pay to do it, and they said, no, no, we don't do the administration, so we had to rush to find that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Here's an answer, a quick thing on the Airbnb. You can see from all the discussion tonight, we've been doing a lot of stuff the last couple of weeks, and so I have not gotten that draft out to you. I will be getting that out soon, and those that are waiting for, yeah, it's not affecting anything. By being delayed right now, there's a lot of work to be done with zoning, so this is not affecting anything adversely, but I'd want to get it out there, I want to find out the view of everybody on Airbnbs and ADUs, and so that's coming soon. It's just, like I said, it's been a lot. You saw the motion earlier about the temporary poles at John Street Tower. We have had, I think, four meetings in the last two weeks with either all the carriers or at least one of the carriers that are on the tower, and that includes AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile. Dish Network is not currently on it, but they had wanted to be, still do, we believe. And so the question really was, how do we get you off our tower? How do we get you permanently somewhere better, ultimately, be at the top of it or on a separate pole? Everybody out there, it's a challenging site, because there's not that much room over there. However, they had, I heard it from Aerosmith, which is not to ban, loving an elevator, not it, but it's the folks that actually build these monopoles and whatnot. We'd actually talked to them, one point a long time ago, when we're beginning to get our feet wet with all this stuff. So, their preference would be to not go back on the tower. The tower currently, you've probably heard, Eric, you might want to take notes on this one, you've probably heard how bad the cell service is toward Colonial Hills to the north, and Rollins Street to the north, and when you go out there and you see what's going on, literally, the transponders are blocked by trees to the north. And so, even putting a corral at the top, a two-tiered corral would be, they were not excited about that prospect, even though, you know, it might be cheaper initially, it wouldn't be overall. They want to go for a new monopole out there, which is similar to what the town of Boston did with their water tower, and putting the monopole next to it, because it gets these folks off there permanently, you don't have the same problems of corrosion going on inside, or having to tent them somehow if you had to redo the exterior and whatnot. And so, the height of it is a little daunting, at 180 feet, that we were waiting to make sure that we have no FAA problem if we were ever do that. But there is a true upside, because you'd be so clear of the trees, that to the north, suddenly, the reception would exist. And so, while I know there's a negative connotation to monopoles and visibility of them and everything else, this one already exists by our water tower, it's just going to be higher and more effective, ultimately, so if we're going to have one, let's at least do it right, is my thought of it. They're working to figure out all this, how it affects our leases, because generally, what's going to happen is, it's going to be our monopole, and they're going to basically pay for it in the meantime, and then it'll affect the leases and the whole situation. But we're low on some of these leases, what it all means, we're going to find out. We already talked to Verizon, they're going to do a little bit more discussing internally about it, but I want everybody to understand that what this is going to do, because of some regulatory issues, is this. There may be a need to separate the internal work of John Street Tower and the external work on John Street Tower and re-mobilize USG. If that happens, Verizon and AT&amp;T have stated that they are willing to pay for the re-mobilization additional cost in that situation. The goal remains to do the internal of the, or inside of the tower in the spring, March, yes, start, give or take, which was pretty much the plan all the way over the last months. And then, the exterior would be, hopefully, fall of next year, worst case, spring of 2026. Obviously, the part that means more is the inside, because of some of the residual lead paint that never got taken out 20 years ago, it's minuscule, but still, who wants it in there, and the corrosion factor that we had highlighted with our inspections. So, everybody's committed to getting that done, you know, for even Verizon, we had two years left on our contract with them, sounds like a normal cellphone problem, having a contract, can't get out of, but they're willing to work with us to get out of that and redo it with what's going on here, and work to get their stuff off the tower with regulators as well. So, you know, you learn a lot, and this was never my forte. I've started every conversation with the carriers to say, I may be a lawyer, but this is not what my specialty is, and obviously, we're going to be doing some handoff to Carla once we're comfortable with some of the business terms, where we might be going with this, but it was really good to see all the carriers working together, which, from what Don Rhodes, from La Verge says, never happens, the way that it's been happening here, but they all understand the challenge, but they also understand it's a win-win, because they know as well as we do what their service issues have been from that John Street Tower service zone, and this is going to help them out if we approve it down the line, and we'll have to do a seeker and all that stuff, even though it's, will be a village project per se and village land, there's some things we still have to go through in that situation. So, there'll be, there'll be a lot more on this down the line, I just wanted to begin to get everybody informed that we haven't forgotten about the water tower, cell care has been a major challenge on it, I think we've gotten through some of the worst of it, to at least get some brainstorming going. The internal of that tower is going to be taken care of early next year, which I think we should all be thrilled about. USG will do the remainder of it within a year of after the internal of it, and the warranty will be affected accordingly with respect to protecting the paint job that they do on the exterior later than what was anticipated in this whole thing.
And then, we saw a sort of picture of where the towers are, they are on the far side of the tower, not closer to the houses, away from the houses, right?
Where they end up putting the monopole might be where the shed is currently, because the shed is only used for some minor storage, we'll figure out with BPW what to do with that. That will buy them enough room to get enough of the stand that you need, basically, to start shooting that thing upward. So, you're still going to have some protection from the trees, obviously, though, it's going to be popping up above the trees, which, again, I understand the concern, but also, you know, folks even a little ways away from there just can't get good cellphone service, it's amazing. Like, you guys used to live there, right?
Russell Street was okay.
You're probably still close enough.
But, to the point, though, I was in Adams and that area, and a number of folks said their cell service sucks, so that's a technical term. So, I think as much as it's taller, I think this is a move in the right direction, and it'll allow us to, you know, get really going on the work and...
I have brought up to Supervisor Ostrander, and that's when Del Nicky heard this said their last meeting, because I've been just saying, are you going to object to it as a town, because they're right there, basically, you almost cross right into the line right there, and they said, just keep a surprise to the situation, and they've worked with us to make sure, because he, too, has been fielding numerous calls and concerns about the cell service in this town up there, and we hear, he's always said, oh, to people, talk to the mayor. Well, okay, well, the mayor has finally got an idea that maybe we can do something about it after all this time. We didn't know how good it would be, but at 180, 180, 170, 160, 150, but still above the trees, because if you put four people on there, it's basically 10 feet per, is what they figure in for that. And I, again, more information to come, but if, we're working on this tower, we're getting[1739.63] but if we're working on this tower, we're getting this tower done and we're going to also have a better permanent solution for these carriers, it sounds like, which I think is a really important thing down the line for when we have to do this work.
Okay.
Let us go. No treasure support officially, although I will remind everybody, we did put the AFR out. I think it actually got reported to the state already too. So we're up to date to May 31st, 2024, which is the end of that last fiscal year. So I didn't hear any comments from anybody on the AFR. So if you have any in the meantime, feel free to email or, you know, next meeting or whatever, but it's out there.
You email that to us?
That was Melissa that did.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
We haven't seen that. Great, thank you.
Like I said, just email if you have any questions. She's out until the end of this week anyway, so early next week we'll get you the answers if it's something she can help you with.
Did you want to talk about that before we move into the next one?
Yeah, go. If you want to. Do you have that?
I do have it in front of me.
Good, please do.
I was trying to hand it to you.
Yeah, sorry.
It's there. Matt Reckline, the chair of ZAC, had sent us an update, which was nice. Everybody received it. They are, my eyes are terrible. This is why I was passing it off. Let's see. So they last night on November 21st and they discussed signage pools and home-based businesses. They have provided feedback to Chris, the consultant who's working with them. They also are awaiting a second version of the draft. They're expecting that soon. And then the next meeting for the zoning advisory committee will be on December 5th and they're discussing area and bulk schedule. And he anticipates it might take more than one meeting. So he'll update us and we'll share it with the public.
And just to add to that, he also said that he would post the documents and results of the last workshop, the public workshop on the website.
Okay, did you say one?
Assume he's getting with Jen and Del Nicky.
I have not heard she was in today, so I haven't been updated on that one. So let me read one thing here I received today. Name with health, but I feel it should be read. Dear Mayor Rossi, it is late fall and as in many other years, the Village Fall Leaf Pickup Program is non-existent. Every year in the fall, the trees shed their leaves, requiring them to be gathered and cleaned up by the homeowners to ensure safety from fires, lawn care, and overall well-being of their property. As in the past, the village has been empowered to pick up the piles of leaves left by the residents after raking their property. Each year, this process is getting later and later, resulting in leaf piles being blown all over, requiring multiple re-rakings, clogged street drains, buried by snow, and flooding. This year, as in other years, leaf cleanup is missing, as is seeing the village street department working in the village. Where are they? This cleanup activity is an annual event that is important to the village to prep for the winter season and important to the village taxpayers to maintain and preserve their property. Please move it up to a, in caps, priority for the taxpayers to be done in a timely manner as they deserve and need. Okay, sincerely, name with health. Dear, name with health, you're out there.
I got a point where if somebody makes a statement, is it not required to share their name and address?
I'm doing this only because I've received this.
That's innocuous, but you know, like just in terms of protocol.
If somebody foiled this, would they would get the same thing of name with health? I know, it says name with health.
Oh, and they just came to you that way?
Yes.
All right.
So, you know, it's daunting to receive it, but I looked at it and I was good-humored about it because, look, we know. So the challenge ultimately is paving and leaf pickup are usually around the same time. Paving has to take priority because the plants stop producing at a certain point and evolution stops doing the work as well. And so we do have a hard deadline on that. That said, we're going to be working in the future to start trying to push this up somehow, some way because clearly it was later than any of us wanted. However, the idea that the DPW, it was non-existent, it really depended on the street you're on. And we did unearth and advertise out there the order of streets and everything. And one of the other glitches in this whole thing was our leaf pickup machine died at a certain point and needed to be repaired. Thank you, Councilman Del Nicky, to your town and Jason Miller for helping us out in that situation. I sometimes bust on Jason about, you know, our relationship between village and town, but at the same time, we appreciate moments like those for sure. We loaned out the back truck from time to time. They loaned out the leaf pickup when we need it. And so that's very necessary cooperation. We do appreciate that. But that happened here, so, you know, we had to make sure that we tried to play a little bit of catch-up. I think we're within a day or two of getting to every street for the first pass and also getting to some of the brush as well. So we get it. We get a lot of these notes and calls and everything else. I do want folks to understand that we are not ignoring the idea that this went a little bit later than normal. Paving definitely because of the three phases of this year went deeper than it normally does. And we're going to look at ways to resolve that with evolution down the line so that we get the schedule pushed up a little bit more. So thank you for your thoughts on this.
Just a quick question. Are we on track with the Whizwell Sewer piece?
I think they're working on it right now, aren't they?
Okay. All right, I wasn't sure.
Okay. Next up, we've got liaison reports more officially. Go ahead.
I just have some updates from the Business Association. Small Business Saturday is November 30th, this Saturday. I encourage people to come downtown. A lot of our small businesses try to have deals or giveaways and just it's really wonderful and important to support our local small businesses, their families, their folks that, you know, are in our neighborhoods. So get out there and spend money. That's always a weird thing to say, but I encourage it. For the folks that have seen it, the tree is up. It's in Whizwell Park. It is, we're very thankful for the Salazar family in Malta who donated the tree. It is a 40-foot, 45-foot tree, which is gigantic, but will be beautiful. One of the tree top techs who offered their technical assistance as well as DPW who set up the tree. So looking forward to that. Just a reminder, the parade is, the holiday parade is December 6th. They are still looking for volunteers, so if anyone is interested, they should reach out to Maggie at Boston, excuse me, ballston.org. And just also to put on your radar, the Holiday Mixer is December 16th, starting at 6:00 PM, and it will be at the Brickyard as usual. So.
It's the 18th.
18th. Dana said 16th. 18th. Thank you.
There you go.
I stand corrected.
Why are you starting that one?
The Holiday Mixer will be December 18th at 6:00 PM.
At the Brickyard.
At the Brickyard. Thank you.
Mary?
The groundbreaking at the library for construction, about 75 people showed up.
That's a lot.
It was more than anyone had.
Good to see you there.
Yeah.
Great event.
More than they had expected, which was awesome. Great snacks, nice speeches. So everyone had a good time. Reminders, the community Thanksgiving breakfast meal is Thursday. It runs from noon until 3:00. It's free. If anyone doesn't want to go out because of the possible bad weather, they do do deliveries. And the phone number, information is on the village website if you want either Jody's phone number or the firehouse's phone number.
Do they need any volunteers on Wednesday?
They need lots of volunteers.
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
They're looking for drivers on Thursday. If anyone is interested in driving and delivering to those.
Wednesday, what time are folks, because there's peeling and chopping and?
They're going to start at 9:00 AM and I believe there's going to be somebody there all day long.
Okay.
Thursday, 65% chance of rain, high 40, low 33. That sounds great for Thanksgiving. Anything else?
Breakfast with Santa, September, I'm sorry, September, Saturday. December 7th, 8:00 to 11:00 AM, $5 per person. There'll be entertainment. That will be singing some songs.
He's got a beautiful voice.
He does.
Come and listen.
And where was it located?
I'm sorry, St. Mary's.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean? I stole your lead thunder. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So DPW report, the American flags are down and Christmas has come to Boston's bar early. So the things to do is they have to decorate the tree, which would take a couple of days because it's big. And leaf pickup continues. It'll be four more days from round one. And then probably a pause and then there'll be another brush pickup being done as well. But there'll probably be, there's going to be a second round as well. The ADA sidewalks are half-formed and they need to be finished and poured. Winterizing hydrants continues. Also, interviews for new DPW hires continue as well. We haven't filled those positions yet. And prep for ice and snow needs to be done. As the mayor said, they're a little behind with paving and everything else, trying to catch up. And two-storm catch patients need to be replaced before winter. One thing in a discussion with Jeff today, he brought up the pool filter.
Yes.
And he is going to put some stuff together and send it to you for the board to review.
It was budgeted for in the budget. And if they do the self-installation, I think they're either right on or just slightly exceeding what we had budgeted.
Right.
So I said, by all means, if you guys are willing to do it, just order the thing so it's ready to go for this next season.
Right. So he said that would, they would have to pull the trigger either next month, the latest January, so that it would be here in time so they could install it.
We've just got to check on procurement problems on that because it may be right at 30,000 threshold. Is it 30,000 then a threshold?
20,000.
Is it 20? So we may need to do a quick review for procurement to get it done, but we'll work on this in the meantime. If you can talk to them, we'll probably get to them and make sure, remind them on that. Okay. All good? Thank you. Ben?
All right. The park or the Committee on the Arts said they don't have a tunnel report right now. The one thing that's coming up, January 18th, is 3:00 PM at Brookside is something called String Theory. So that, again, classical music. So it's always been very lovely programs and well-attended. So it's been a successful series. They got in their Saratoga Arts Grants and they are working on, starting to work on the April Poetry Month activities. They're going to mix it up a little bit this year. So they're still sort of figuring that out, but that'll happen. Something will happen around Poetry Month in April. So that's good. And then the Park and Tree Board, they are working on a grant for the park. They're thinking maybe for the pavilion. So they're excited about that. They are talking and starting to work on how to unify all the gardening and watering that happens in this village to try to make it a more rational system and paid for and unified because it's been a little disjointed and some places have been neglected as a result. So trying to identify all the places that need maintenance and then come up with a plan with VSBPA and adopt a plot to try to make that work, you know, and in time with the budget that's happening. So that's good. They did also have a conversation about trees in the sidewalks and how to manage that and, you know, concerned that if the trees all, obviously, they talk about some trees are in, have been removed or plan to be removed that are just happening.
Let me give you a little bit more specific on that because this has been an ongoing conversation. The Methodist Church had sent us a message concerned about the tree growth on Route 50 by the White House, basically, to the north there. And worried about their stained glass windows perhaps being penetrated by some of the growth going on and whatnot. And so we look at the situation. We're like, do we go and trim these and spend a lot of time and money after we do that? Or do we do what we ultimately need to do because of the heat going on and get these trees out of there, get the trunks out, get as much root out in the square as we can for now, come back in the spring, take out the panels, redo the panels in those areas. It's probably about three or four trees affected in that. And then use some of the grant money that we have to replace the trees with better trees ultimately. And that's kind of where we're leaning. We did reach out to Caitlin to talk about it. I know there was a little bit of consternation, but they eventually reached the idea that if it's part of a longer range overall plan to get them replaced and to resolve some of the worst that's going on there because that's, the worst heave, I think, in the village is there in front of the White House area to the church. That might be the way to do it. So right now, we got, I think, a price of about $6,000 to take those trees down. Then we would stump them and de-root as much as possible in the square so we don't have a regrow like we did with Petalone Hive Street after that got knocked down. So just to, you know, make it look manageable there, then come back in the spring, pop out panels, re-lay the sidewalk. We don't think it's going to be of a grotesque expense to do all this if we do the work ourselves and we have kind of the permanent permit from DOT to do our own work essentially there, although we probably will still get them to buy into what we're going to do in that situation. But we've got to bite the bullet. We've been talking about, you know, different methods to do it. And now that we've actually got this complaint about the tree, you know, hitting the church and everything else, we're going to spend money to clip it back. We might as well take the thing down and also get a plan to replace it once and for all with the grant money we've got. So that's where we're leaning. We're going to work with Park and Tree to finish out the plan on this and with DPW as well. It's not something we want to do. We don't want to take down the lovely scenery of the trees, but we also know at the root level, it's been a disaster. What's been going on in that sidewalk and it's time to do something. Ray, I keep saying Dottie back there. As one of the proponents of that, well, I think we're there.
So one thing, just to clarify, I think you said that we would do some sidewalk repair work as part of that? Is, are we taking on?
Well, replace panels is what we would do there because of the heave that's being caused.
So, so what's not clear is when it's, it's the property's responsibility and when it's the village's.
This is clearly these trees have caused heave. They needed to go anyway.
Right. So if a city or a village tree causes...
This is DOT basically giving us the tree and the maintenance that went with it back 20 years ago, wherever it was. And so here we are. There were more, were less village trees. They're not going to take responsibility, DOT.
No, I'm not against the approach, but I guess we should just be consistent if there's...
We said that this is village tree causing issue would be village problem.
So if there's, for anybody.
We've basically, I think in that discussion.
Yeah, we did, we did say.
Well, part of it is, is that those pads near those trees will have to be removed anyways to get the underlying roots that caused the heaving out. And they will have to replace it with subbase and basically repour it. So obviously, that's by removing the tree that is like an ancillary.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. So I just want to clarify that if people have village trees in front of their property that are causing heave.
It's a special circumstance, but it does happen a decent amount, yes.
Then the village will or may take care of the sidewalk around that tree to fix the sidewalk around that tree.
If we feel after review that it is the village tree causing the issue and that a removal especially is going to be necessitated by what's going on, the village is going to have to step in and do it because it is technically our tree causing somebody else an issue. Now, if it is their own lack of upkeep on the sidewalk that's going on without a tree or something like that, that is their responsibility. Nothing else changes. This is clearly a DOT tree handed down to us and we now bear the responsibility because the tree was doing it.
We do that.
Yeah. What I would like to know about those other streets is, did the property owner put this, put the tree there? Because yeah, then I don't know why the village should have to do it for the problem you created.
It depends on if we clearly adopted that tree or not. So or if they did it without authorization too. Here, we know what the answer is. I'm not going to overcomplicate this.
Right, exactly.
And it's time, it really is, to at least do one side of the street to the degree we can get most of it done. And then look at the other side too. There's a couple of spots over there as well. And again, try to make it, get the scenery back too with some trees that won't do this. Because somebody had posted on all those Facebook pages the other day when they were all the Dutch Elms basically. And it's beautiful, but it also looked like a much narrower street going ahead at that time too. But how things have changed, but we don't want to take away all that atmosphere now.
So we think this will be what, 20,000 or something?
I think 6,000, take down the trees, stumping and de-rooting to the degree we can. And then redoing the sidewalk itself would be a cement. Well, it's not nearly as expensive according to Scott on this as I thought it would be. So maybe ballpark-ish, yeah.
Yeah. And it come out of the general fund balance?
Well, we do have 100,000 right now in sidewalks minus a little bit that we've taken out. So I think we got plenty of room in that respect.
Now, one thing that Chris said at the Park and Tree Board from Cooperative Extension.
Yep, love Chris.
Our local expert, tree expert, is that in Saratoga, they actually decided to contract out the stump removal because it was very complicated because these roots.
You have to.
These roots wrap around, you know, things underneath.
Stump removal is something, so you have tree removal, stump removal.
So we'll contract out. Okay, so we'll contract out for that. That's what he recommended is not to do it ourselves.
Oh, no, 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 no. That's not what we would do. We've got a couple of different organizations that we've been looking into to do it more regularly. So we'll try to get there with some company that's going to be more routine about it. You try to wait until you have like three or four at minimum so that, you know, mobilization costs don't each up alive. So if you've seen one, it doesn't mean that we forgot about it. It means that we're just waiting to get a few more before we go. before we go and call somebody in.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Want me to take it?
Okay.
Uh, new business, update some fire contracts. I will not read the email.
Lots of emails.
That was an anthology.
Whatever you refer to.
Was it at least helpful?
Yeah, it's all helpful. It's like, okay, a lot.
So long ago and far away in the town of Milton, over a year ago, we were talking about what to do with the expiration of our five-year contract for Fire Protection Service in Fire Protection District Number One, which is more or less the southern end of the town of Milton that we protect. We protect two out of village districts, that one and town of Boston, a much smaller area. It's about seventeen percent of our district up there and probably about what a half of our district is that town of Milton's, give or take. So we were hoping to get a four or five-year agreement when it got down to it because we had needs for a few things going on here. First, the pump for truck, which is already on order for nine hundred thirty-six thousand plus some soft costs, around nine forty-nine fifty. A ladder truck, which when, Berna and I were talking about this earlier today, when we first had taken office in twenty-two, I think it was, we were always told, you know, about a million and a half. And then somebody started pricing it out with the inflation since that point. And that truck is now closer to two and a quarter million dollars for a replacement ladder truck. It will take three years to get that truck based on the order process. Right now, it's crazy. It's like our dump trucks we're still waiting for at this point.
How old is our ladder truck?
Twenty-five-ish.
Twenty-five years?
Yeah. So you remember some of the repairs we had back when, a couple of months ago? You're actually, even after spring, I think we were summer. Those are starting to eat up the budget alive in and of themselves to the degree that we may go into the minus this year, even with the contract money. It's just, it's, you know, you, we just got an I S O. Rating, actually, that Chief Bayshore sent out to everybody. We got an improvement in our I S O. Rating, which is essentially our service rating, which is one of the best ratings you can get. And a part of that, in my estimation, is the ladder truck allows us to cover taller buildings and commercial structures better. And so I think that contributes along with some other things as well for I S O. Rating purposes. Nobody else in our general zone, except for, I think, out in toward Malta, has a ladder truck. And so that's why it's important for the entire community that we maintain that. Otherwise, we're going to be waiting possibly for a ladder truck if somebody else has a fire simultaneously, God forbid. Okay. So that's three point two million dollars in equipment. And there's also the problem that fire departments around us give a low SAP program, length of service award program, which is like a retirement program for firefighters. And what it does is it encourages participation and longevity inside the fire department, which knowing how volunteers are so tough to come by right now, it's important to do what we can to incentivize. And for instance, Rock City Falls, which is the other major part of Milton, has a low SAP program. I believe Burnt Hills has a low SAP program as well. You know, I know one firefighter in Schenectady area that retired. It was going to get about thirty-three thousand dollar payout for all their years and years and years of service through a low SAP. And it was an incentive definitely to continue and to, you know, do what they needed to do to be a big part of their firehouse. So it's no small amount of money at the end of the day. So between all this stuff, when you look at what the cost would be for these two trucks, let's say we went twelve years, four percent on average, give or take these days, and then a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year for a low SAP, if we were to provide that, you're looking at basically four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year of new money. That's a lot because our total contracts right now are in the seven hundred fifty, seven thousand dollar range, give or take. But a couple of thoughts. First, we have current debt that's going to retire in two fiscal years. So we have a couple of payments left after this fiscal year. That payment is about a hundred eighty-two thousand dollars a year. So, okay, right there, we reclaim part of that four fifty, left at about two seventy. Now, let's say the village, if we went toward the fire tax idea we've talked about implementing, and we can slowly implement it. We don't have to, you know, ratchet up tomorrow type of thing and still could start up the low SAP in the meantime, using fund balance to help build it and then pay ourselves back later on in the whole cycle. That's a hundred twenty thousand dollars of our money going into it. So that would leave from the two fifty, or two seventy range, rather, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to be able to do all this stuff that we would need. So somewhere between the village, the town of Boston, the town of Milton, we need about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to make all this happen. So our fire department last year, our fire chiefs were, you know, they presented to both towns and they said, "Look, our competing districts, Rock City Falls, Burnt Hills, they are charging a dollar thirty-two, dollar thirty-four per thousand assessed value." And Milton, Boston are within one percent of each other in their equalization rates, which is what factors out, you know, inflation essentially. And so these rates are similar to each other at the very least at one thirty-two, one thirty-four. We were at ninety-six cents. Now Milton, to Milton's credit, and thank you to Scott O'Shrender for this, went from thirty-six cents a number of years ago to ninety-six cents until a couple of years ago. Now, don't ask me why we were at thirty-six cents. One thing that becomes clear is that a lot of equipment did not get replaced during that time. And so everything's kind of expiring on us at once. And so who feels the biggest pinch? But Scott and me and our boards at that point in time, because we have to come up with a lot of money now to start doing the right thing and get this equipment replaced. Well, back and forth, round and round, we went. I did some of the math. I worked with the fire department. And so instead of asking for a dollar thirty or whatever, you know, would be the reasonable request and then play it down from there, we tried to play a reasonable game with the towns. And we knocked it down to a dollar sixteen, which in doing the math, we could average that over four years. So we said, we keep this year at ninety-six cents because they'd already collected for this year. By the time we got, you know, on the table, we approved that month and a half ago, two months ago. So ninety-six cents, ninety-six cents for two years straight. We wanted to get to a dollar sixteen on average. And there's two ways to do that. Like this or like this and just hold, basically. And we got a lot of pushback, a lot of question about our own commitment to our fire department as a village. The fact is that we have a lot of commitment, even financially, because we do provide the building improvements. This year, it's about a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars when it's all said and done because of the delay we had on the apron. Also administratively, a lot of, all the functions we do here are fire functions. Insurance we provide, obviously bundled in with everything else. So we have a lot of things that we do provide. It's harder to quantify what we bundle. They ask us, we kind of say, well, it's fourteen percent of our budget. You work it from there. Okay? But long story short, there was a lot of pushback and a lot of questioning of skin in the game. I wish you didn't go there because I think all of us as a board care immensely. We've said some stupid things at times, all of us, but we all, at the heart of it, love and appreciate what our fire department does for our community, for the outside communities. And that Greenwood fire that we had the fatality on, I learned a lot during that day about just how much heart there is in our fire department and how it affected them. Even though it's part of the business they're in, per se, it still killed them. And, you know, God bless them for what they tried to do that day. But the long story short is we have reached an impasse of sorts with at least the town of Milton. Town of Boston has been reasonable insofar as they, with their controller, have said, "We want you to have the safest, best equipment for not just us, but for their community, their taxpayers." And so they are going to collect, I think, a dollar fifteen. If they don't pay us the dollar fifteen, they will still put it in reserve to see what happens with the rate down the line. They also didn't want to pay more than the town of Milton for the same fire service. Makes sense to a certain degree. I can understand because at one point it was at a dollar and thirty-six cents, a dollar and thirty-six. And it's like, how did that even happen that way? So, okay, knowing that, the goal is to try to get Milton to come up to help at least preserve what Boston's willing to do. We couldn't get a clear answer until Milton's budget came in, the preliminary budget. And inside the budget, you could see, yes, it was about three and a half percent more being offered after. In April, we actually had an offer of what I would call a declining rate over four years originally because assessment growth isn't really growth for us. That means when we have assessment growth in the town of Milton that we are getting paid for, we also have to do more calls and give out more resources presumably because there's more things to protect that could catch fire in the town of Milton or the town of Boston or wherever. So we look at the rate. The towns might not, but we do. We look at the rate. We went from ninety-six cents in their preliminary budget to ninety-six point seven cents for next year. It's, I heard Liz laughing. Liz, one of those rare days, we're going to agree on a subject. And it's a helpless feeling of sorts because you know the right answer, I know the right answer, and it ain't ninety-six point seven cents at the end of the day. We've been told quite a bit that it was a tax cap issue. They didn't want to raise the tax cap on our account. And fire protection districts differ from fire districts because we actually count toward the town's tax cap. Whereas the fire district like Rock City or Harmony Corners or Burnt Hills, they just have their own tax cap to worry about and they can exceed it if they want to. And who shows up to vote for a fire district budget but the firefighters, their families? Nobody really cares. They hand the budget over to the town and say, "Go collect this in. Everybody looks happily ever after." We don't have that and we're not going to turn into that either because we did the math to find out, what if we did spin off? The math is we would have to, or that fire district, it wouldn't be we. We, basically, we just pay for the services ourselves, too. We would, they would have to charge a dollar forty-five per thousand for something that we want to offer for a dollar sixteen per thousand as a village fire protection district scenario. So we've told the town of Milton, that's not going to work for anybody. Why would we do that? It's a lose-lose for everybody. So they had tax cap room left, thirty-nine thousand dollars according to their preliminary budget. Mike can verify if I'm wrong or right on this because they use it on their budget committee. But I said, "Look, if it was a tax cap issue, would you please give us thirty-five of that thirty-nine thousand?" Because who knew they might need to spend a few thousand on something else? And it would raise you from ninety-six point seven cents to about a dollar, two, dollar three per thousand and at least show on a one-year agreement, and we'll come back to the table again. I want to do this every year. I don't. The right momento. Showing us you're willing to work with us. We can begin to order things or get that, get a plan finally together for this ladder truck because it'll take three years anyway. And, you know, we've got at least something. I went to the meeting last week where the budget was approved. I requested that amendment. It wasn't even discussed. Disappointed, but life goes on. I did call town of Boston the next day to say, "What are you going to do now as a result of this?" To Dave Yurkovich, who's their controller, who's been phenomenal to work with in this process. I've said it before, I'll say it again. Dave said, "I think I could probably talk my board into about a buck thirteen." Which, when you think about this, that's extremely generous under the circumstances. He asked us for some call volume numbers, which Chief Bayshore provided him today. And they actually showed that Boston probably is more than what their actual percentage of assessed value is. About twenty-four, twenty-five percent of the calls, if memory serves, compared to seventeen percent of the assessed value. So it justifies, at least, I think, when you look at it. And that's more or less about twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars right there that the town of Boston's only put into this pool. And I appreciate that. And thank you to that board if they do come in that direction. And we'll be there to justify it if you need us to, to the town of Boston. Our fire department is nervous that the town of Milton is going to give away their fire protection district and thus hurt the village and the village's fire department. I don't want to approve this personally, but when your fire department, who basically is the group that's putting out these fires, says this, what do you do? You have to listen to them in that situation. So my message to everybody on this update is twofold. Number one, I think it's bullshit that we are being put in this position and the town of Milton should do better. And there is a councilman here tonight. He knows my feeling on this. Eric has been very good about communicating with me and I appreciate that. And I know he feels it helpless at times on this because he understands as much as anybody the importance of our fire department to the town of Milton. So Eric, I'm not centering that on you, but in general, I think this is a lousy scenario when basically there's going to be a forty cent differential between Rock City and us. And that's not anything against Rock City. It's justified. That number seems to be the general rate in this zone. And so we're powered to them. I, this is, they do a great job with what they have as well, Rock City Falls does. So does Harmony Corners. But on the flip side, we need to accept it because unfortunately, we've been put in this odd position by a town that I wish placed better value on this scenario right now. And I think you can call into question our skin in the game as much as you want, but the numbers are there. Maybe they're not directly equal. But as I've said before, it's tough when you take a look at running a village versus running the town. Town has a big highway department, no doubt, and some other departments, court and stuff like that. Village has a lot of things, police, fire, pool, library, et cetera, water, sewer. Okay, these are departments that we have to look after as well. And, you know, they call into question the size of our fund balance. I don't think that's fair. I think they don't understand fully the, all the things we have to protect against with all these departments and what our obligations are down the line. I think a lot of this needs to kind of come out of the vernacular or the discussion. And we need to focus once and for all on what we're doing here, which is showing our fire department that they have a true value in this whole thing. And yes, going up to ninety-six cents was important, but as Chief Bayshore and I have both said, you've gotten us down the field, Milton. Get us across the goal line. And we aren't at the goal line yet. So that's what I have for you, Ben. I know you want to make the motion to approve the contract that was sent over to us. But I just want to let everybody know you'll have an opportunity for ninety seconds of public comment when we get to that point. So hold on. If you, anybody wants to say anything, since this is in old business or new business, you're more than welcome to before we get to that motion.
Sure. Well, yeah, thanks for all that information, Mayor. Yeah, reading through all the emails, going back and back to April, you know, they sent a bunch of stuff. And it does seem like there's just a fundamental disagreement on the numbers themselves. You know, they're stating that, that this village is getting between twenty and twenty, twenty twenty-three, we got about five hundred thousand dollars more than we actually spent on the fire department. And.
That's not true.
Well, yeah, but that's what they're saying.
I know. We have a reserve of about two hundred thousand and change. I got the exact number. I've been tracking since Julia had originally told us to take the two-year amount. And then the stuff since that point. So and I've shown the expenses and I've shown that amount to Milton as well, just to be disclosing about.
Well, it sort of begs the question of, you know, what, what are the real numbers? And I wonder, would it be helpful to have a, some kind of fire reserve fund where are the money they pay in? Well, we have one for the equipment.
Trucks, yeah.
But is it possible to have a fire reserve fund where, you know, the money that Boston pays in Milton just goes into this separate account where it's very transparent what's happening with the money and, you know, where it is and how it's being used?
That's not a reserve fund. That was something that Milton had wanted separate accounts for this and we look at the controller and that's not feasible. A reserve fund is just that. It doesn't just, it's not just a line item. Give them a specific type or capital improvement or equipment need for a reserve fund.
We can't just be for an apartment.
We talked about box about that idea of the separate accounts and it was like, under no circumstances agree to that.
Really?
So what we did was we had Dave Raimer, the controller in Milton, talk to Bob directly. And they use AccuFund like we use AccuFund. They have the on-server version. We use the cloud version, but it's the same general thing. And when he realized we could segregate expenses inside AccuFund very cleanly and we've sent them two expense reports to show them, you know, those accounts and everything, he was more willing to accept the language that we approved the one year back a few, a couple of months ago in the way that read. So we kind of put that one to bed, that aspect of it, and to be honest with you.
We did just, this was discussed with the twenty twenty-four contract.
So that we can track, you're saying we can track the way it is? We can track it now?
Absolutely. The only thing I had to. The only thing I had to do by hand was building improvements showed up in the whole expense report. So I said, okay, here's what the building improvements were, we're going to subtract that because clearly that's our money we're spending. And here now, get the debt account and here's what we spent with your money, here's what's left, basically. That will be pushed over to a truck reserve, to the truck reserve fund, for me to say. So I've shown that the last two years with the stuff so that they had that.
Yeah, well, because that was my takeaway from the town comptroller report was that it kind of went into the fund and it was difficult to track. But if we can, it seems if we can give them some assurances that this is where the money went, here it was here and this is what it got spent on and also what our share is towards that contribution, I think they might feel a little more comfortable in the next year's contract to, you know, negotiate something more reasonable.
I have stated from day one, Mr. Shawn, that if they're willing to provide more, we're willing to show as well, A, more commitment financially, you know, speaking for myself that I'll vouch for it, okay? I think we've generally all felt this way about it. And B, figure out ways to isolate it better so that perhaps we separate building improvements into a fire tax column. Okay, so basically your tax would go down because we'd have this new tax, you know, it's separated from, if it's still collected by us, for fire tax, okay? And to show somehow what's going toward fire from the village taxpayer and then increase that separately. Now, it's all under the same tax cap at the end of the day, that doesn't change that world, but it would show them, oh, look, the village is doing blank per thousand as much, okay? Right now, we're having to sit there and, you know, do longhand math and show them everything and then all these disagreements occur. But the other problem is, how do I say how much Terry is worth toward the fire department and Jen and Melissa and Rebecca and me, you, all you and DPW to a certain degree because they do do some stuff related to the buildings and the blacktopping and everything else or paving. You know, there are so many different components to what we provide as a village and it is tough to track everything. And insurance, fire and police are our two biggest components in insurance. So, you know, it's bundled up. So we get some savings on that, so it's tough to say exactly what is fire in our insurance policy in terms of the premium we pay. So that's the stuff that it's, it's tough to do that and they look at us like, oh, surely you know. No, we don't know, but clearly we have skin in the game on that stuff. We can estimate it all day, but can we figure out how we're going to agree to, you know, disagree on that estimation? I don't know.
Right. I mean, they were, they were saying they're, they're assuming like 10% of the treasurer, treasury, our treasurer's department is what is going because I guess it's...
It's 14 when you look at it.
Well, yours is 14, but theirs is 10.
Well, when you remove things completely unrelated in the budget like library, okay, shouldn't be included in that number and stuff like that. And then you put back in the fact that our building improvements are part of the numerator in that situation because that's stuff that we're working on. So while we provide it, it still counts for our contributions for it. So there are different ways to arrive in numerators and denominators on this is the problem. But I landed, as I looked at it back and forth, I've lost sleep over this, Ben, okay? I have.
It's very frustrating.
It's frustrating when especially it's this group that it's affecting for us. It hurts. It does.
I don't, I don't know how to bridge the gap because they're, they're relying on the audited reports goes to state comptroller, you know, and, and they may, those reports may have different line items than what we use internally and, you know, this memo, I just, I just got this quote from the memo, they're just, they're feeling like they're just paying everything they need to pay. And, and one of the points they make is like, it doesn't matter what the dollar per thousand is, it's are we covering the costs, whatever that is, because, you know, we have a different assessment, size of the district, all that, but you know...
How do you steer a firefighter in their face and say, yeah, he's worth a dollar thirty-six, he's worth 96 cents? It's honestly, it's not funny though.
But if it's different, if they're serving different number of houses, it could make sense that through economy of scale...
But the rate, actually, Rock City and us in Milton is 50/50 just about with small sliver of Harmony Corners, to be clear on that. So that is almost right.
Yeah, I'm not defending their number. I don't know that their numbers are better than your number, you know, but clearly we have this impasse with different numbers. You know, this is what they're saying, the proposed financing, I'm quoting, the proposed financing is for the April 2024 proposal for five years, schedule should provide the village's fire department with 5.7 million dollars in resources versus cost totaling 4.9 million. So they think our costs are less than maybe what they are. The town is hopeful that village officials use the excess resources totaling approximately 850,000 to pay off outstanding debt and/or avoid issuing debt to purchase equipment and apparatus. So they think they're being...
The last few years, in the, in the expense reports that I got the building improvements out of and netted out the grants that we got from FEMA and everything, two fiscal years ago, it was about 80 to 85,000 of money to put into reserve. This past fiscal year on the near final was about 40-ish thousand dollars. Presumably, since there was no jump for this current year that we're sitting in, it's going to be zero if this trend continues or worse because of these repairs that we're facing. So they can say that all they want. I provided them the expense reports against what they provided and they didn't even understand that when they give us money in February, March, we don't use that money in February, March. We use it in our next fiscal year that starts on June 1st so that we take that number, we budget it in March because we know what they're, they've given us now and that's how we budget it moving forward. Even that was lost on them. It's like, this shouldn't be that tough. I don't get what the disconnect is even on something that easy on this stuff.
So, all right, so bottom line is...
Do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, we probably should at least keep things moving for a year and hopefully maybe use this year, maybe this year we can somehow meet in the middle in a little better, yeah, make a little progress, hopefully. I know you've been trying as hard as you can.
The question is, do we maintain the pumper that's on order? I have asked the question to see if we could find out if we wanted to cancel that and order the ladder truck ultimately, what the penalty would be if any. We're awaiting that answer. So we'll revisit that at a later meeting once I know more, okay? But I, look, you've used the word austerity a number of times in other meetings. I'm not looking for austerity necessarily here, but it's going to affect the math here because we can't just, we haven't collected a tax here to just suddenly put all this money out there on half the village. Whether or not we wanted to do that, it's not there right now. So we have a truck that's supposed to come in in the next half a year, that's 950,000 against us. And we have a truck that we really do need, it's two and a quarter million dollars. Something's going to have to give somewhere and we've got to figure out what that is. And we didn't want to think this way, but now we're going to have to begin thinking that way. Make your motion.
All right. It's a simple motion. Motion made by me, seconded by somebody...
Just a simple motion, go ahead.
All right, to approve the one-year 2025 fire protection contract between the town of Milton and the village of Boston.
And to authorize mayor and deputy mayor to execute the contract. We have that at the end there.
Okay. All right, accept that amendment.
Okay, so are you making that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by trustee Condeza. Okay, as we said, we'll provide 90 seconds for anybody on this specific motion to get up to podium if you want. Also, if you would like to raise your hand, you're more than willing, or more than welcome to on our Zoom. This will be the time to do it. Anybody want to speak? Yes, Liz? I knew Liz was going to be first. Liz, hold on one second, we'll skip this camera over to you, okay?
Liz, Liz Formos, 89 Hyde. I just had a question on the ladder truck. How many buildings is that, do we need a ladder truck for? And isn't the fact that Milton is going to be approving a project that is multiple stories, you know?
So while you're there, I'll answer this question because I did bring this up last week at the town of Milton meeting. It's not just about the height of a building, it's about the method of trying to fight a fire. Chris can attest to this as his neighbor's fire was one of three structured fires that we've had, major structured fires that we've had in the last months. The Rask fire, the Greenwood fire I alluded to earlier, and the West North Street fire. All three of them had the ladder truck extended over the roof because they needed to be fought from up above. And the best way and easiest way to do it, especially if there's a certain juncture between the street and the house, is to extend the ladder truck in that way to try to knock it down. Now, they've had great success in knocking fires down as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, in the agreement fire, the resident just was in the wrong place at the wrong time and the whole thing could not get out for other reasons too, I'm not going to get into. But it is not just about tall buildings. Yes, it helps with a tall building by all means and yes, that discussion should be coming up with respect to the Milton project you're talking about. In fact, the Rock City does not have that truck, but they want to sort of allude to, well, Saratoga's got one. Well, I don't think anybody wants to sit here and lean on Saratoga Springs to be the one to bring the ladder truck into Milton. I think it should be the village of Boston Spa's ladder truck because you know it's going to show up in that situation. And so there's been a lot of stuff said that I think shouldn't be said, that we should all agree it's needed, it's important, and the more development that occurs in certain areas, the more important it becomes. So I get where you're going with that, so I just want to be clear that it's not just a tall building thing.
Yeah, okay, it's not just that, but also what percentage of their visits, you know, their calls are in the village? I've been asking that question for a while. You know, they report how many, and I know their calls are increasing, but is it because of, is it increasing in the village or is it increasing because of all the new development, you know, outside? So that's just, you know, where, where the dollars should come from is where the need is. My point. Thank you.
Great.
Where do I start? As, as the guy that used to do this with the EMS agency in this village, I used to be the one that came up with the budgets and came up with the percentages and the dollars and all that. That was my job. What I haven't heard discussed at all is the cost per household that this would actually be, going from the 96 cents to the dollar 20 cents.
Dollar sixteen.
Dollar sixteen.
Twenty cents on a $250,000 assessed house would be $50 a year.
Whoa, that's what I'm talking about. The amount of money that we're talking about per household is minor. 50 bucks a year is going to buy that equipment. 50 bucks a year is going to get them what they need to safely fight these fires, okay? A hundred dollars. I, for one, I would give $200 a year. If it's going to get them the right equipment, in my taxes, a hundred dollars is not a big deal.
How do you feel about the LoSAP if the village were to provide that out of curiosity? Because that's been an issue. It's got a referendum.
I would absolutely, 100% agree with that.
Thank you.
And I got a spin on the game. I tried getting LoSAP for the ambulance agency, but as the volunteers went this way, it was, it was moved to try and even bother with it. Didn't make sense. The firefighters, we got over 100 firefighters in this village, okay? We are blessed with that. That's 100% behind that. But again, the cost per household is so low, I don't think anybody in this room would say, oh, I'm not going to give another $50 if I'm going to get good fire protection. Doesn't matter where the truck goes, it's when it's needed, okay? And to Liz's point, you know, it's not about the height, it's how they have to use the equipment, whether it's the pumper, whether it's the tanker. If the, the fire hybrids are available, if they're not, you know, it's, it's so much involved in firefighting until you go and spend some time with a firefighter. Gina will tell you, you know, she's involved in the fire department, but talk to her husband, he knows. There's so many things that are involved. It's not just a matter of, oh, hook up to the hybrid, squirt and it's done. It's not that. It's just like with EMS, it's not that.
Thank you, Frank.
Same thing.
Anybody else in the, I have Mike on. Mike, I readdress that.
Thank you. Mike, I allude to you, 304 drive. Just quickly in 90 seconds, I, I think I can confidently speak for everyone on the town of Milton Budget Committee and I think for town of Milton Board members, that there is tremendous respect for the fire department in the village of Boston Spa. And as a resident who lives in an area that would be serviced under this type of, under this contract, I certainly appreciate all the efforts that the volunteers do and the equipment they have should be good. And basically, from my service on the Budget Committee for the town, I can tell you that the town does not feel it has sufficient documentation about expenditures relating to the fire department.
Did you ever receive the two expense reports I sent them?
No, I haven't.
And so that would tell me a little bit right there, to be honest with you, Mike.
So again, from the town's perspective, just to try and give a little bit different perspective, the, the town sent a proposal for a multi-year contract in late April. No response has been received to that.
Not true.
Well, no response to the five years' worth of production under that proposal.
It's not true. I had multiple emails with Attorney Craig, multiple, multiple, multiple times. Every time this comes up, I send the same exact emails again. That's not true.
Well, that seems to be the problem, Carl, because somehow there's a disconnect. You feel it's addressing it, they feel it's not. So, so on that point, let me just also mention, in case people are not aware of this, the town has requested mediation services from three state agencies of some sort. And I heard the names, but I don't remember them. So the town is looking for a cooperative approach to get this resolved to the satisfaction of both parties because again, without question, the town values the fire protection that's provided and wants and needs to see it continued.
Hey, Mike, I'm going to come back over here for a second with Carol and me for a second.
You need to calm down.
So, okay, everybody stay calm. I think, you know, all things considered, I've been pretty enraged and upset about this. I kept my cool tonight in this discussion. Let's all keep our cool. You were fine. I'm not talking about you. It's that person over there. So anyway, Carla and I have both been, they received the mediation emails and I looked at her and I'm like, what would we be mediating exactly? It's either the numbers are or the numbers aren't in terms of especially, as I tried to boil it down like last week, here's what we're sure. Does the town of Milton want to contribute toward it or not in, at the end of the day? Okay, that's kind of what this all boils down to because town of Boston clearly is. So now, in the village of Boston Spa said, has said, or at least I have on our behalf, we're willing to up our output here if you do, Milton, especially that 35,000. I suggested 20,000 is about the same assessed, you know, dollars per assessed value scenario. I would vouch to us to do that. And there was just no response, there was nothing. So, you know, 35 plus 20, $55,000 right there, I thought, we'd only get another 12 from Boston, they may as well do more than that. Well, presumably we'll do more than that, it sounds like. But, you know, there's like $67,000 for 35 and it's like, wow, they wouldn't even entertain it. So again, we go back to the mediation question, go ahead.
Yeah, there's been a lot of conversations between myself and the attorney of the town. I think perhaps there's not been full communication, perhaps, Mike, with your, your committee. But since May, Attorney Craig and I have had countless conversations, countless emails. I'm not defending myself, I'm just advising the public that there have been responses, there have been multiple conversations, there have been multiple drafts. This new mediation, he is indicating that there, you want the Association of Towns, the New York Conference of Mayors and Municipal Officials to mediate this. Those are not mediation groups. This board knows what NICOM is. Your, your board knows what AOT is. They are, they don't get involved specifically with individual villages, cities or towns. They just don't. They will talk to us, but you can't have them review one of your laws. They do not come in and have a mediation service unless this is something brand new that all of a sudden NICOM is willing to do. I have been involved in NICOM for over a decade. I speak regularly with NICOM Council. I give presentations for NICOM, never came up. So I don't know where that came from and to the mayor's point, I don't know what would be mediated. This is a contract negotiation. That's all this is. It's a contract negotiation. The village has one position, the town has another. This isn't something that's going to go to litigation. That's where you would have mediation. So even Attorney Craig had no idea what you guys were talking about with respect to NICOM and AOT doing mediation. So I'm not quite sure where that came from. There has been, let me finish, no, let me finish.
Well, I'm going to say, now there's my, my word, perhaps mistaken. Cooperation, efforts to...
No, no, no. No, 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 you're, my, it's mediation, it hasn't been brought up numerous times.
Right, that's what I said, and, and that was my word.
Not just from you though, not just from you.
It's from everybody in the town.
From their board. Attorney Craig said that the town is looking to do mediation. That was his word. So that's where I assume you got it from, unless you gave it to them. Irrespective, irrespective. It, it, I think at this point, I don't, I just want the, the, the public here, especially those members from the village and the village board, which you've been up to date. I, you know, we, we've spoken quite a bit about this. That at this point, there's this contract that's presented. The village board has to do what it has to do. But I do not want it to be out there that the village is not responding, because that's simply not true. And I am happy to provide all of the emails, if you really are bored. But that is simply untrue. And, you know, I, I just want that out there. The village has absolutely been engaged in this conversation since April. And we could not even get a response to a lot of it. A lot of my emails were, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on?
I think one thing they're referring to is they were looking for like a vote on the previous offer.
And I had already told them, we're not voting on Doc, you know, it's not a vote on that. It was, this is the proposal, and the proposal was not-
It was a, it was declining rate when you assess, it put 3% average assessment growth. And so it was a negative rate. And it was just, it wouldn't work. I mean, I mean, that's just a non-starter. And we had our conversations, I think we even had a discussion in briefly in executive session.
We're associating with attorney advice.
Yeah, attorney advice. So we, we, we've been through this and look, we're thankful that it's gone up from a negative, a declining rate, I guess. But it's gone up 0.75% now over two years. But again, they're fearful that the town is going to take away their fire protection district, which is shame on Milton for even getting them into that mentality. I don't know who stated that or suggested that. But whoever did that, I, I hope you lose sleep tonight. I hate to say that out loud, but that, that's just disrespectful and ridiculous to even put that onus on our fire department. Because they're going to lose sleep when that fire alarm goes off tonight or tomorrow, God forbid. And you know what? They're not going to look at the rate. And we are always at a disadvantage, always. Because we abide by the mutual aid agreement of the county. And I remember Shenandoah from the Gazette, who I think is finishing up a story tomorrow on this or something like that, she called me across last week. And, you know, she, she kind of said, what happens if you don't do this or you don't reach an agreement? I said, at the end of the day, the bad news to the village, I guess in some ways, is we're, we're good people about this. And we show up either way. Because our fire department's not going to say no, they're not going to not respond unless something disastrous happens in this situation. So Town of Milton knows that, and they can basically negotiate with that in mind, that we're going to show up at these fires regardless of this agreement or how it plays out. And so we're always at a negative negotiating stance in this. And for somebody to abuse that fact is really shameful. And that's what's happening here in my estimation, for them to come to us and say, please accept this subpar agreement, because we don't want to lose our fire protection district. Come on, no. You can talk. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I wish I could say my head isn't going to explode, but no guarantees. Gina Marosi, Ted O'Glory Lane, proud wife of a volunteer firefighter. And I can't believe, I can't believe how these guys are being treated, these guys and girls. It, it's heartbreaking. My husband has been a firefighter for over 25 years in this department. No LoSa, still gave 25 years and plans I'm giving many more. And as I see it, we appreciate the firefighters. We respect the firefighters and everything that they do. Until it comes to putting your money where your mouth is. And my husband's going to freaking kill me for this. The way I see it, the tax cap is more important than the volunteer firefighters. And it's a shame that it doesn't go to the community, because just like Ray did here, you all know it's going to be $50 more a year, you got a problem with that? We're going to have to blow the tax cap a little bit. You got a problem with that for the emergency services? Go to any community and ask them. The one reason people never bitch about blowing the, the tax cap is for the emergency services. I encourage you guys to take a stand here, right here, right now. Table this motion, give it one last ditch hail mary effort. Get everybody in the room, sit down, talk. And see, what have we got to lose by tabling this for one more meeting? We have nothing to lose here, we've already lost it. And you're right. And a friend of mine from the New York City Fire Department always told me, the fire department doesn't go on strike, now this is a paid department. Fire department doesn't go on strike, because when you look up and you see a fire and a woman's hanging her baby out the window, are firemen going to honor that strike? Of course not, they're going to go to work. And that's where they have everybody over a barrel. Please, table it for one meeting, give it one last ditch effort. I know at the end of the last board meeting in the Town of Milton, it was suggested that they come together and talk again. I was watching it on Zoom, I was at a different meeting. Let's give that one more try for our firemen, our volunteer firemen. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? Karen, go ahead.
Karen, here it is, Tennessee High Street. When I was a kid, we had a fire at our house and burned the whole thing down. I feel, I totally feel the pain when she was up here, because I still remember. Our whole house burnt down, and it was volunteers that don't get paid. And I remember as a kid living, not having a place to live. So it is very near and dear. We've also had a fire at our business, so we very much respect the volunteers. I have family members, we have a lot of friends that are volunteers that put their life in harm's way for all of us. And you don't realize it until your family goes through it. And I hope no one ever has to, because it's very painful. But I understand no one wants to pay more taxes, I totally get that. But for a volunteer firefighters, to make sure that they have equipment that works and that they can rely on and that it's not going to fail while they're trying to save your house and your family members, your pets and all that. I just think it's something we should really be aware of.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else? Liz, I wasn't trying to be short, but I do have to-
No, I just- I just want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
How could they drop from the, our fire departments? They, they could contract with the guys in charge, $1.32?
Yes.
Yes, they could. Or Saratoga, which could cost even more.
Unless there's a contract, they, the village does not have to provide contractual fire protection. It's a contractual-
So isn't that incentive for them to, to pay us less than they pay the replacement? I don't get it.
It, it's throughout the state, this is always a town of legislation.
Pete, go ahead.
Are you going to cry too?
So I'm just confused, Rock City Falls gets how much? Pete Martin or Attorney Justin Corcoran?
Uh, $1.32 this year, presumably $1.35, $1.36 next year.
Just go with $1.32. Town of Boston's are committing to $1.14, am I correct?
$1.13 if the controller commits a board, yeah.
So I, I would think, and you told these numbers to the Town of Milton, sure, right? And I respect a lot of what you say, Mike, I listen all the time. If you say, I don't know if you're getting all the information according to our term. So I really think maybe, I don't know, it doesn't make much sense why the Town of Milton would not give us more money if they're paying Rock City $1.25.
$1.32.
$1.32 and Town of Boston's are ready to commit to $1.14. I can understand the fire chief's wanting to accept it, because they're probably worried about losing everything, right?
They are.
I mean, if we do accept it, then we tell the fire department, I can't have that truck, I would presume at this point, we can't even order it.
We'd measure it and see what our exposure would be to canceling, because there's nothing in the contract about termination of an ambulance, so we're going to ask the supplier.
Maybe if you do table it for a week and try to sit down and talk, I mean, if we can get Mike to table, he's pretty, he's a very reasonable guy, and get everybody together, maybe we can. Or, to, to me, it just doesn't make sense why they don't come up a little bit more to help out. Now, are you saying the Town of Boston's only going to give us what the Town of-
No, they, they have, so I, just to be clear, they originally said they were going to be collecting $1.15. I believe they're still going to do that and place any excess that they don't give us in reserve, so that they have it ready to go if we increase rates later on. That he was going to still try, he felt about $1.13 was fair, despite what Milton was doing. He still has to get it through his board and through the supervisor. And he, when I followed up today just to see where we were, he said one of his board members was asking for the service numbers, for number of calls. And actually, it's very beneficial to Town of Boston, because despite being like 17% of the assessed value, it's about 24% I think of the calls over three years. So, you know, if you're from Boston looking at that, it would justify $1.13 a little bit more to you over there.
Did you get the assessed values for both Boston and the Town of Milton?
Yeah.
From the two, from last year and this year?
Uh, yeah, there's a growth of about two, two and a half to 3%, I think, in our district in the Town of Milton, and Town of Boston had a much higher growth, so about $200 million, I think, now over there.
I'm going to put those numbers there. So the only thing I would suggest there, if they will come up, maybe, I'm not going to piss anybody off, maybe we can really do a better job of accounting where, if we can, where all the money is being spent. Like if Terry has so many hours or TFPW gets a spreadsheet and we just show it to them, say, hey, this is, this is where it's really going. Because, you know, if we need that ladder truck, we need that ladder truck. We all need the same thing, and I think we can come together and drive it out this time.
I, I think we need all three things, the pumper, the ladder, and the LoSa, I think, to be a complete department. There, there is common logic or common thought out there, Pete, that in the next 20 years, the county's going to have to get into the fire game. In fact, the state, I think, is just approving, correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, that for emergency ambulance services, the county can actually not participate in that. And so the next step likely is fire as well.
Makes a lot of sense.
Even, because there is a declining volunteerism out there, and there's the costs of some of those apparatus clearly are pricing out smaller departments out there. Harmony Coroner's was at $1.19, which is a small slipper of Milton, and then was it Charlton and, yeah, Charlton and another town that they serve. They went up 18%, or, or, I'll need to go up 18% this year. So even if that department is feeling it, that they needed to jack up their ratings to that same $1.35 strategy.
I, I think we could all come to some kind of agreement, I hope we can. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else on Zoom? Well, we could do a special meeting if that's one of the reading between the lines here.
Yeah.
Because the town doesn't have to do it.
Yeah, okay, so let me just-
Oh, sorry, it's public footage, I did want to comment.
Yeah, I think so, nobody else, right? I didn't see any else. Okay, let me back this up.
I'm glad I didn't have to do this tonight, I'm just saying. Zoom and the camera. I, I did want to touch upon kind of what transpired earlier this, this week. I think it was last week, gosh, I was sick last week and everything kind of went crazy. I, I did receive a phone call from our fire chief, very concerned, and there seemed to have been pressure to accept. And, and I had shared with the board that, you know, while I did not think it was quite where we needed to be, that we should show, show support. But if there is, I mean, the biggest concern that I had going from Monday to essentially Wednesday, when the Town of Milton had their meeting, was that that number wouldn't be there, that there wouldn't be funding. For some reason, it was communicated that that was actually at risk. And so that's why I was, look at this, can you look at their proposal, just to get an idea, to communicate that with, with the board. But then Carla and I worked a lot together and talked a lot together on this over those days. And kind of toward the end, we all of a sudden got an answer from the Town of Milton attorney saying the board should pass that with the funding included. So, so that initial concern of risk of like losing that funding for our fire department, I think it's alleviated for now. And I think we have some time, should get maybe more than just you and Scott, get some other brains in there and other folks, kind of maybe to kind of point out to all sides, where can we find some commonality, or what are we not hearing from each other? We have one more meeting in December, but if we put an extra meeting and we could accomplish this, I don't know how many meetings, they just have the one every month, right?
Just as an FYI, because of some stuff playing out with Milltown, we may need a special meeting to get something approved, to be able to do the water provision there as well. I'm waiting, it's something got a little must up because I was going to put it into this meeting, but I, I wasn't comfortable with where it was. But it would be time sensitive, so we may have a couple of birds to build one stone on that one. So be aware of that. I may have been asking for a special meeting anyway, if it became time sensitive with Milltown stuff, because obviously you want the revenue for water provision there, we can do it. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I, I think get a team together, it's worth having another conversation. I think there are hearts in the Town of Milton side that are soft-hearted to our fire department, but just maybe, you know, have expressed like, I don't, I'm not seeing it, you know, where, where there might be the exact need. Our mayor has expressed that he has shared that and explained that. So maybe it's just a matter of like, are you guys speaking the same language first off? Kind of that thing. So it's worth taking a crack at it, I think. Regardless, you know, we do, we're aware that they have that funding in there. If, if it's still, it seems like the risk that I was concerned about last week is not there right now. So how, how quickly do we think we can get a meeting with everybody, I guess is the question?
I'm here.
Well, do you think it makes, I mean, they, they now have the number in their budget. They voted on that.
Right, they can amend, yeah, as long as early December, I think, because basically what they'll have to do is print out the tax bill sometime in December and mail out. So they have enough time to make that amendment still.
All right, so you think there's hope for further negotiation?
You know what, Ben? I wish I could sit here and say, absolutely, but you know-
But you, you think it's worth trying?
What's there to lose? I, I-
Well, you've put a lot of energy in, at some point you're like, well, this is what it is. But you're saying there's more, there's more that could be-
I think the $35,000 suggestion I made last week for a one year, plus $20,000 from us commitment, just to, you know, balance out the assessed values, with, plus what Boston's doing, just puts us in the right spot to start doing the right thing year to year moving forward, and/or maybe even get a three year or four year next year. Just sitting at 96.7, one of the things I keep saying, Ray, again, correct me if I'm wrong on this, while we're doing the same increase for community emergency, that's great, except there's one major difference between community emergency and us. They can charge, we can't, okay? So if there's a shortfall, they just up their rates a little bit for their calls, and there it is. We can't do that. We are tied to either what the town's give us or our own budget at the end of the day. And yes, we sit there with our fund balance as a protection, you know, map at the very bottom of things. If something, you know, horrid happened to a building, we're there for them, okay? We don't quantify that exact number. We, you know, we have four to five million dollars fund balance sitting there as an absolute protection scenario if something goes absolutely wrong at all, but obviously, but you get the point. So we don't have to quantify that stuff, but we're there for them.
So what's the 20,000, how much is that per thousand for village residents?
Uh, 20,000 is 1% of our taxes, give or take. So 1% is about $5.62.
So we probably, real quick, just somebody texted me, tax rates are going to be calculated next week. So we have to really get those hopes that, you know, whoever we're going to have involved-
The tax rate doesn't change, actually. This has no bearing on the tax rate, this would be the side collection. So I'm not sure if that affects that differently. And I, I shared with them that, that last week, and Mike, as my witness here, I reminded them that if they gave us the $35,000, the $39,000 cap, tax cap, basically doesn't affect tax rate, it is a separate line item on a tax bill that is unrelated to tax rate in Milton or Boston in that situation.
But not for us.
Well, it depends on how we end up characterizing things ultimately.
And I think the timing of like last week and when this new idea had come about, I don't, I don't know that Milton would have had enough time to mull over it too. So, you know, we don't know the thoughts of the other board members. You know, I know John Frolish has been- You know, I know John Fullish has been talking to you quite a bit, so I'm curious what his thoughts are on that.
He's actually been bullish on the four-year contract idea, understanding that we have equipment needs and to know for sure we're going to have the money there for a contract would be the way to do it. And so you get conflicting advice on one year, four years, et cetera. I would love a four-year agreement. At this point, give us the one year. I mean, I, I don't know what else to say at this point.
I'm fine tabling it. Do you think, I don't see any harm that will come from it, Ray?
I think we could wrap it up quickly though.
Yeah, the only, the only caveat I would throw out there is that the current contract ends December 31st. The town, under town law, has to have a public hearing and they have to give 10 days notice to schedule a public hearing. So Jim and I were talking last week. He was hoping to have some kind of information from the votes last week. And I said, we haven't had a meeting yet, so we can't give you the information.
They need a public hearing on their budget or our contract?
They need a public hearing on your contract.
Oh, jeez.
Yep, fire contracts. Fire contracts need a public hearing.
But we don't.
No.
But they do.
That's under town law. So they would have to have it. I don't know their meeting schedule. I know that they, they only meet once a month. So if they actually want to do this, they have to have, they should, they could schedule a special meeting as well. So to your point, I don't know why we would need a special meeting. I mean, if you guys could get it. The special meeting is full. I mean, the town would have to do that. If you guys could get it all done, you could do it at your next meeting, at whatever meeting you guys have in December.
No, we need to, they want to have us approve it before they have their special, their public hearing, obviously, right?
Well, we would have to approve the contract.
Correct. So if we're not doing it tonight, it's a matter of timing for when they can get their public hearing together.
And also to, to, to everyone's points, we didn't sign, you didn't sign a contract for 2024 until two months ago. And there was still fire protection being provided. So I mean, it's not unusual for to bleed into the first.
Actually, I think the contract says, if it doesn't happen by January 1st.
And Jim and I spoke about that too, and we specifically kept that in there just in case it bled into January.
So it's not a huge problem if it doesn't happen January 1st?
For the village, no.
It is for the town?
I can't speak to, to the town. I mean, maybe they think it's a problem, but legally, I'm, your attorney, not theirs.
So why don't we offline talk about who, try to get a meeting, who could be on that meeting?
Is this a motion table?
Yes, I'm going to make the motion table.
Go ahead, second.
I'll, I'll second the table with, with the understanding that if Milton comes back and says, we need to do this quickly, we should have a special meeting to figure that out.
Okay, remember, motion tables only based on the motion table. You can't tie things to it, but I hear what you're saying, okay? We go direct to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion table carries. Thank you. General public comment on any issue, three minutes. Again, if you're on Zoom and want to give a public comment, now would be a time to raise your hand. Anybody else want to give a comment? I am shocked to say Liz Cormos would like to speak.
There's just a couple of minor things. One suggestion, please put the location of your meetings on your agenda. Not everybody looks at Facebook and there's some confusion, you know, with the library and all that. Also, the village calendar for next month has the Board of Trustees meeting on December 1st.
There's a civic plus issue that Jen has to actually by hand because she can't just remove them. They have to basically schedule them all and then go back and remove them later on. This happened about a month or two ago, I remember. So, okay, we'll apply that to her.
Yeah, there's also two park and tree board meetings, one after the other. Are you also, is the next meeting a week or two weeks from today?
I have it done as the last.
It is two weeks from today.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's in here? Because there's a meeting on the 10th of December, Tuesday, so it doesn't make sense. Anyway.
Oh, yeah, it's not, I'm sorry, you're right. Sorry. So the summer night is our next meeting, right, Terry?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you can get that corrected, because it's kind of.
Yep, no, I'm sorry about that.
Kind of confusing. One other thing, you know, this relates more to budget, but you remember the TAPSC grant that we didn't get.
Yeah.
Because of not having accurate surveys showing where the right of way is and also their suggestion to talk to the railroad. So I'd like to suggest that you put some money in next year's budget to actually get that work done so that when the next grant comes up, we've got what they, what was missing.
We're going to wait first to see what the federal budget provides possibly with respect to the town bill money that we had discussed prior. Because some of the right of way mapping, et cetera, was actually inside of that. So we may have some action there, granted, who knows what's going to happen with federal budget process at this point. But hopefully we'll know soon on that because we are in the federal budget currently, so.
Okay, so, yeah. But just, just so we don't forget that, to get that done so that we have a better chance of getting that money next time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Martha?
Martha, I believe Chief Reonk or Drive, I just want to encourage you, when anything starts to happen on the cell tower, that the people who live in that area be notified because lots of times that doesn't happen. And the people who live here, there are all of a sudden going to see stuff going on and they're going to be a little bit irritated that nobody told them.
It's part of seeker, I think, with a certain foot radius requirement. So we definitely will be working with the town of Milton also to make sure we get everybody on that side of it.
Sorry. It's tight in here. Could you pass that around? Marilyn Stevenson, 45 West High Street. Passing around to the trustees, a poster flyer on the garden club's roof ceremony plan for the Village of Boston Spa. We do it every year at the Veterans Memorial on Lous Street. This year, it is Friday, December 6th at 12 noon. And the public is invited to attend this solemn event to honor deceased veterans during the holidays. Again, something you'll see around the village as we put posters up in local businesses and online. I did want to give you kind of an official update on our last zoning advisory committee meeting, and I'll try to talk quickly. We basically met on November 21st. We had three topics, signage, pools and home-based businesses. The majority of our meeting was spent on signage. And I have to say, I think we had a very productive discussion. This is a topic that we probably discussed almost nine months ago. And we are just now getting to the small group breakout sessions. We talked about signage, how the code is difficult and we do not have enforcement. We talked about various types of signage, advertising versus, you know, decorative murals, banners, digital signs, feather flags, sandwich boards, all these things. And the bottom line is, you know, there were a number of points that came up that are really kind of important. One of them was, should a municipality follow their own zoning code as it relates to signage? And we had quite a bit of discussion on that. We also talked about the lack, current lack of design guidelines for signs. They just don't exist at this point in time. And the fact that sandwich boards are prevalent through the village, we're seeking from our consultants some clarity about using those. In terms of pools, pretty much that was a no-brainer. There's a state code that relates to that. We had a good discussion about home-based businesses. And to cut to the chase, we did, or are planning to ask our consultant to modernize a definition for a home-based business. We seem to have concerns about parking, noise and traffic, but for the most part, I think the group was favorable in making sure that home-based businesses and local businesses flourish in the village.
You're the only guy making, wrap up a little bit.
Yep, I will.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is December 5th. We are going down the rabbit hole. We're going to be talking about the area and bulk regulations as they pertain to zoning.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. So in part of Matt emailing us the reports is to help streamline and put that as part of Lee's on reports. We're just trying to be cognizant of the length of our meetings and sometimes length of public comments. So you will be hearing that from us going in the future.
We technically reached a two-hour mark, but part of the two-hour rule was that public comment and response would be allowed for at least a half hour. We got about 10 minutes left on the half, on the half hour portion of this. So still got time if anybody wants to speak. Didn't mean to scare of any way.
I just wanted to, the letter you got, who was, who was that from?
Name withheld.
Name withheld, all right. To Mr. or Mrs. withheld. It's a very simple answer to them. If they feel their leaves are not being picked up quick enough, go buy some bags, put them into bags and your, your garbage people take them, unless you have a certain county waste company who only comes once a month to pick them up. But they're garbage people, take those. This is the last week for that, so Mr. or Mrs. withheld should really hurry and bag up their leaves.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else? I see nothing on Zoom. I see nothing else in the room. And so at this point, it is time for other business, including but not limited to board response to public comment. You know, I want the microphones, you know, turning red, they go by any words. I have to look at faces now and be like, yeah.
No, you just hear Ben go.
I'm good tonight.
Sean?
I, I don't really have anything to add, no.
Mary? Where are you at? Terry?
I am not on the board. She says to this.
Yeah. Can I get a motion?